Lord, thank you for this morning. Lord, each day we're just greeted with anticipation and what you have in store for us individually. And, Lord, especially this morning, what you have in store for us as a commission as we continue to serve our friends and neighbors here in Leclae County. Lord, and we are grateful for that. And we're grateful for this time of year. Last week is, as we recognized Thanksgiving and gave thanks, Lord, for all the blessings that we enjoy as individuals, as families, as a community, and, Lord, as a nation. We just feel your presence when we give you thanks for all that you have bestowed upon us. And, Lord, as we approach and live in this season, it gets busy, it's chaotic, it gets frantic, but maybe just stop and pause and realize what this season is all about. As we take up the business that comes before us this morning, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom and just help us make the best decisions that we can for those, again, who we serve. We just love you and we thank you and pray that everything we do would honor and glorify you in your son's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. First item of business will be, we will look at the minutes for November nineteenth. If you've had a chance to review those, I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
I see.
We have a motion, second, to approve the minutes for November nineteenth as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes approved. I'm going to take up item number two this morning because I think we have some guests here for the bid openings and then we'll move back up to item number one. And here are monthly updates from department heads. So, bid openings, Sheriff Patrol Vehicles.
Looks like we have three. Received your third, eight twenty-one, December. The Graven. And they were included for two, so it's eighty-five, six ninety-four. With stated what's included. That was Grayman. This was received on the second from Ed Morse on Ford side, I guess. Says they're in stock. Okay. See if we have a total for both. We have one about it. Kind of hard to follow. It appears as if it's fifty-two, six forty-one each. So I guess they would have to take that thanks too. Well, this one's different. Not sure. Then the order is forty-five, one twenty-seven. So I guess you get, we have a couple in stock and we have to order whether there's different prices involved with that from the Ford side.
So the in-stock price is the forty-five, one twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Yeah. Was it fifty-two, six forty-one?
Right.
Okay.
The order is forty-five, one twenty-seven.
Okay.
Each. Okay, this is for the Chevrolet bid. It was received on December the second also. There's only an order option there. Appears to be fifty-five, two fifty, total sales price. Well, yeah. I think that was base price on the Ford. Yeah, fifty-five, two fifty, the Chevrolet. Moving to order.
Did that, the Grayman bid, they didn't say that it was in stock or whatever.
It didn't, I just looked that through and would only speculate if I said anything.
I'd make a motion, we table those until the sheriff has a chance to let those over. Second, we have a motion, second, to table the bids to give the sheriff opportunity to evaluate. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Next, we will open bids for the roofing of the courthouse. And this is for the purpose of the evaluation of the roof as it, it's in its current condition. It is under warranty until October of twenty-five. The purpose was to achieve some degree of budget certainty by extending a ten-year warranty on the current roof.
Okay, looks like we may have two. The first one was received today at eight thirteen. Appears to be Ivy Roofing. Price is definitely not popping up either. Oh, there it is. Sorry, I was overlooking. Seventy-four, two twenty-five. Seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That calls out what they're doing. The other one was Styles Roofing, received at eight sixteen this morning. It appears maybe we're not talking about the same thing because this one is two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. But it does call out what they're doing, so. Definitely what we need. Sustainable.
Any other bids on the roofing? Keith, would you represent your company, Styles Roofing?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you would like to share with the commission?
Unless you have any questions or for the different agents, reach out. I might as well, including, it's a full restoration, so it's a full system. Sixty-five mil stick and three-in-chain warranty and options for twelve-year warranty, ten-year warranty. Full infrared scan, find the moisture in the current system. Before we do this, then removing all the light and your eye protection and putting it back. It can't be coated with a place, so it's got to be removed and put back. And that's a renewable, sustainable system, so. That was my impression of what you might be looking for.
Okay, very good. I'll entertain a motion to table those to give us a chance to review those two bids.
So moved.
We have a motion, second, to table roofing bids for review, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Keith, thank, thank you. Next, the bid opening would be the aluminum box culverts.
Okay, looks like we have one from Lane Enterprises. Received on the second December. They're ceiling good. Okay, they have a drawing showing what they're presenting as well. Sixty-two, thirty-four. Is the total. Polyfab LLC.
Coin.
Coin.
Looks like we have one from V-Bro. And it was your C, twenty-five. It appears to be the same number thirty-six structure with a thirty-one and a half foot long shell and a total price of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
The gentleman from Polyfab did stop by yesterday to deliver that. And I think, Christian, you want to speak to, you're with V-Bro?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you want to speak to yours or, or his?
Well, with ours, we'll have a person there the whole time to make sure that everything is there. To put the box together and, and I'll, Lane's out of Pennsylvania, so, you know, they're not going to have a guy around, so. But we'll, I always come down and help guys out and if they need anything, I can take good care of them, so. But that box should work well. I bought a couple of other ones from us and it worked out really well for you.
That onsite consultation was in the bid advertisement. The onsite consultation during construction, that was one requirement.
Christian, I'm just scanning this quickly, okay? And then I'm sure we'll table it and give Mike an opportunity to review it. So, I'm pretty bad about looking at the bottom line or getting to the last paragraph in a book and reading that first before I read, read the whole book. But down here somewhere, it talks about, and there's three copies here, so I'd like to, like to make sure I read it right. But it talks about something about a load rating at two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
What's that about?
It's just, it's, it's where they put a load rating on the box itself. It, it's just a piece of paper, basically is all it is. You have a load rating on it. It's a, it has a forty-thousand-pound load rating and it's already engineered and everything. But they, they put, they put paperwork in place for something like that and that's for your copies, you know, just to be able to have on file. But it's, I don't, I don't know, it's not really needed. It's something that just basically shows that you had, this box will, will be able to carry this amount of weight. But we already know what that weight is, I believe, so. Which is about probably around forty thousand pounds.
So what you're saying is for the documentation, it's never two thousand dollars?
Yeah, because they have to, they have to work that documentation up outside of the, outside of the box paperwork. Does Lane include that in there?
I, Christian, they're, they're not here, obviously. I didn't, I didn't go to the last page on theirs. It just popped out on yours, so it was just in. They do include onsite, okay.
Christian, that load rating, that forty thousand, is that per axle?
Yeah, per axle, yeah. So I mean, when a bus goes across there, not, both axes aren't going to be on it at the same time. So if you really put that into perspective, you're really going to have to have a lot of weight go over the top of these things in order to, you know, for them to have their own structural integrity, so.
So in your profession, in, in your opinion, would you recommend that?
I wouldn't necessarily think you need it. It's, it's something to have on hand if you, if you decide, you know, if, if there's a bad accident and you need to have a little, you need to have paperwork on it or something like that, I would guess that you would, might need it. But for the bridge itself or for the structure itself, you really don't need to have that type of paperwork. It's all, it's all kind of figured into the structure and it's just a, it's just something to have on file, in my opinion.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for Christian? No? Okay, I would entertain a motion to table that, allow Mike the opportunity to compare the two bids.
I'd make a motion that we table that bid for the box culvert.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion, second, to table the bid for the box culvert, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Good table. Christian, thank you, and you're welcome to stay if you need to. We, we won't be offended if you walk out, so, okay. And it's good to see you again. Okay, next we have department updates. I'm going to go back to item number one and Mike, we always start with you, Roden Bridge.
I really have a very minimal update. We didn't get an Alborock quota, all of it's been hauled. We got some maintenance roll call laws out on vacation and we started working on the two sleds on Montauk yesterday, one from concrete today, hoping to finish them up tomorrow. Came back to a standing shop, so that was good.
Where'd that come from?
The heater, maybe.
Oh, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, the ones in the shop are not parents of little.
Uh-oh.
One of them is not functioning.
A little chilly this morning, huh?
Do we have any right-of-way clearing scheduled?
Right-of-way clearing? As far as?
Just generally?
Brush cutting.
Brush cutting, line of sight?
Yep.
Have we used our new blade yet that we purchased for the brush cutting?
I'm anticipating doing that next week, up north, Orchard and Olive area. Now, we haven't been able to use that because our brush cutters wouldn't stay up and going long enough to be able to pull something on it. We're just going to go on our spare and got a guy going to put in it and get started on that up there. While it's on, Mike. Had to take care of that one up there at Normandy and Dumplin as well. Because Guy is way up north and it'll be a while before he's back down south, so. Be a good thing to get it taken care of while faster than waiting till Guy can get back.
When will Montauk be, uh, about to open back up? What do you suspect?
Well, his temperatures are low, but it, it could possibly be at the end of next week.
I haven't looked, Mike, but what's our, what's, what was fuel budget like this year? How we, how far did we hit that one pretty well?
Fuel, quite a bit left in there.
Is it?
It's like we were right around, I want to say sixty percent.
Do we have any questions for Mike? Any additional questions?
A little more explanation on the still standing part.
Well, it was still standing when I got back, so. So it was a plus, but.
Okay. Nothing, nothing tied to that, in other words?
No, no, nothing tied to that, just.
Good. So what do you think is the issue with the shop heat?
Their age?
Looked in any cost, what might be, I know you've been off, so it's kind of.
Just aware, made aware this morning that they weren't working, that one of them wasn't working. So I'll have to get some numbers to try to get in budget for replacement.
Well, it sounds like we have some fuel budget left. If we don't have anything else left anywhere.
I don't know if we can get that pulled off in time. We got to explore a couple routes, whether we stay with natural gas or do we venture down used oil heaters?
It turns, we have that much used oil or not?
Yes. We probably still have enough used oil that we still have to find a place to get rid some.
Okay, Mike, anything else for us?
I don't believe so.
Gentlemen? No? Okay. All right, Mike, thank you. Next, I'll call on Mike in maintenance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Doing our daily routine. We started trying to pick up, actually this morning, good night, but we're just fixing anything they throw at us. In rail, quarter weeks. Got the two compressors that are supposed to be for Unit Two up there. We should have a tracking number on those today, so hopefully, maybe by Tuesday of next week or Wednesday, we might be able to get down here and get those pretty. They just kind of been on back order. They should be on their way. They should be in their hands by Monday, they think, so. And part of the problem was there with the office lady, put them on pause. And she didn't realize she didn't order them. They showed orders, but they weren't ordered. So we ended up waiting another week or so before Chris figured out why they weren't coming, so. Other than that, no, we're just, like I said, we're working on stuff like lights in the porthouses, keeping the jail plumbing going and jail repairs. All that stuff that they, comes up daily. Working on front doors out here. We obviously had them replaced, they're still not working right. I should hear, as soon as I get off here, I should be able to get in touch with Tom again. And he is trying to come up with a plan to get us worked in where they can actually bring a guy that knows a little bit more about those doors than the guys that, some of them, I think Josh is on vacation for the next week. bring a guy that knows a little bit more about those doors than the guys that, um, some of them, I think Josh is on vacation for the next week. But, you know, we, we've done everything to them that we know what to do to them to make them work, but they're just not shutting, the way they're supposed to shut. So we're gonna try to, uh, push that all onto their table and let them figure that out, so.
Mike, has there been any update or a fix, uh, for the, uh, plumbing issues down the new nine-one-one? Some of that flow, I, I've been meaning to ask you and, and, uh.
It's working much better.
Okay.
It's working much better now, we got a little bit more water flow with the new valves.
Okay.
New diaphragms in there. Now, if they overload it, uh, tissue, if they flush it twice, it won't plug up. But if they just let it flush and walk away, I've only had one. Still where it was plugged up since we put the new water valve in. But it's definitely a, a, a water pressure thing. Most of these valves, I think, are made to work for about fifty-five pounds. We got forty-five, so it's just not giving just enough water to, to push it down there, so. Like I said, if the girls over there, uh, just one restroom that seems to wanna plug it up, ladies room in nine-one-one center, you know? Let them ask them, just kinda flush it twice, if they put a lot in there, and that seems to be keeping it from backing up, but, uh.
Is that one of the water miser valves, Mike?
Uh, I'm not sure, a water what?
Water miser, basically use less water. A lot, a lot of this new stuff, we may need to change that back to a more normal flushing capacity. Not a washing of them, possibly.
Yeah, that might work too, yes, I had.
Because a lot of the, a lot of these new ones use, don't use enough water, and that's part of the problem.
Right, and we, we put the biggest diaphragm that allowed a lot more water to come on through.
Yeah.
And we set the time up as far as we could to get it.
Right.
The guys are here at least three or four times before they even got to accept to get it working a little better, so.
Okay. Now, those water misers can cause you problems too. Especially if you don't have a good drainage system, or.
Well, and this, I think this is a new drain to, to the sewer. I don't think it goes through the old jail.
Okay.
Okay, uh. And I just think that it would've worked if we had just that, really a bit more pressure to help through, right?
Sounds good.
Okay. You have any questions for Mike? Okay, Mike, you have anything else for us this morning?
Uh, no, uh, sorry about the interruption, I was waiting for a message to come through. And I forgot to put it on silent. But, uh, anyway, no, that's, that, that's it, we'll just keep on plugging along, we, uh, you know, got stuff winterized and, and all that. As far as everything I knew during the rise, so hopefully I got it all, and, uh. Just in time for cold.
Okay, Mike, thank, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Randy, OEM?
So, on the, uh, Bennett Springs Siren project, um, I spoke yesterday to the SEMA director, Jim Remalar, and he is now a hundred percent on top of it. He did make a call to the Assistant Director of FEMA yesterday, and, uh, and that was a, uh, quite lengthy conversation. And, uh, he called me back and said, do not, you know, allow the sirens to leave the warehouse, because it is gonna happen very soon. And, uh, he thinks that the compliance letter will probably go out this Friday. And that comes from the SEMA director this time, so. Uh, there's nothing that we could do locally, uh, to expedite that. And there are ten excuses out there why it's taken eight and a half months to get that finished. Uh, the biggest and the, and the most legitimate excuse is the North Carolina disaster that took everybody out of the office. So now they're, they're back, staff in the office, and, uh, I feel like it's close, maybe within a week. Um, I contacted the, uh, power company, and they're ready and willing. Um, the other siren that's coming off the DNR side, uh, they have already done all of their paperwork, DNR has. So it is absolutely in the hands of, uh, of FEMA, and, uh, Director Remalar thinks that it's gonna happen very soon, and that's all I have to report.
Do we have any questions for Randy?
Don't believe I do.
Randy, thank you very much, appreciate the update. Next item on the agenda will be Rock the Block, Friends of the Fort. This is a request that we had, uh, to help offset that, uh, cost of that project. I believe we've done that the last, uh, probably at least the last two or three years, Daryl, you can help me out, but at least the last two, I think. The request was worth a thousand dollars, and I think that's what we did last year. And the, the line item in the budget is through the, uh, the economic development section, I believe, uh, and we did allocate funding for it, so, um, any, any thoughts on that?
Seems like that is a, uh, endeavor that we would want to continue to be friends with the, uh, our neighbors to the northeast of us, four hundred wood. I think that's a good combination of keeping those relationships strong, and, and this is something unique of keeping this, uh, opportunity open for these soldiers that, uh, don't have any pa- place to go to over Christmas break, and sometimes it, uh, what they do have to go back to is not real good for them and their future in the military, so it's good to continue to do that. I would, I would say we should do that. I don't, we need a motion since we've got it in the budget, or we just, I would speak to say that, uh, I think it's something we could, should honestly continue as, as ability is there to do it.
Randy, do I need a motion for that? Nope, okay. David, any thoughts? Do you concur?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right. Uh, next item I had on the agenda was signage for nine-one-one, um, I, I'd like to go on that, but that may take a few minutes, and then we have general county business, but, uh, I'll recognize Steve, if you have anything for the commission this morning, and then.
Yeah, I did, it was kind of sudden, I didn't get to be on the agenda, but, uh, I have a shortfall in my budget of about fifteen hundred dollars. And I need to figure out if those bills are gonna be paid, or what's, what's gonna happen. If you guys can move fifteen hundred over to that, to my budget to cover those shortfalls, or what we need to do, so.
Um, Steve, would you afford us the opportunity to look into that, because I don't, uh, think any of us have details on that, so, uh, give me the opportunity to visit with accounting, and then I will get back with you. You know, can't do that probably till tomorrow, but I'll get back to you tomorrow.
I just know that I'm handing stuff to Mike, and she's giving me this deer in the headlights look, so.
Where's the money?
Where's the money, and that's like.
Yeah.
Do you give her something this morning?
Not this morning, but we've already kinda robbed from other areas that, that, and now we're at the point we have nothing else to rob, and so.
So does she know what you're wanting to?
Yeah, I've got, I've got another deputy coroner that's gonna have mileage for October and November to turn in.
Does she have that?
No, she'll have it probably today or tomorrow, so, yeah, but I've handed her my mileage, and that was the deer in the headlights look, cause like I said, we've already robbed from other line items that I hadn't spent, and now there's nowhere to rob from, so.
So as long as we know the numbers that you're turning over, then we can look at evaluating?
Yeah, we're, I'm, I'm somewhere right around fifteen hundred, I'm figuring is our shortfall.
Are there, besides the mileage invoice that you mentioned, are there any additional invoices to present?
Not that I'm aware of, other than I've got the deputy coroner's pay, but that line item hasn't been touched, so it will get used a hundred percent. But we haven't touched it, but every other thing has been, and I do not know of anything else that's coming out between now and the end of the year.
Okay, all right, well.
Just normal monthly bills.
So is this a mileage thing that you just turned in for the year?
No, turn it in every month, or sometimes there's a two, I forget a month, and then I add, but no more than two months at a time.
Okay.
So.
Okay, anything else, Steve?
Uh, no, it's pretty much it.
Okay, give us the opportunity, and we will get back with you tomorrow, either myself, or Mike, or Linda, one of the three of us. Okay, all right, thank you. Steve, good morning.
Morning.
Do you have anything to?
It's more, it's more in the form of a question.
Okay.
We got a bridge on Nebraska we need to replace. And it's a one-lane, uh, bridge, it, it's a low-limit bridge too. Probably by the type of construction, probably built in the thirties or forties, it's that old. Uh, it's thirty-five thousand dollars, basically. And those are, those are real numbers, so.
Is that a contracted out price, Steve?
It's a contracted out price.
So, um, for us to consider funding opportunities, okay? Uh, one of those opportunities could be some remaining ARPA funds, okay? Uh, not saying it would, it wouldn't be, right? Okay. However, if we do that, um, that has to go out for bid, and those funds have to be committed by the end of this year. Now, the project wouldn't have to be complete this year, Steve, but we would have to have the funds committed. So, um, for, for the commission and the Conley Special Road District to see if there's a way that we can work together on this, um, I would think it'd be appropriate if you did put it out for bid, and sealed bids, and get tho- and the, and those have to be out for two weeks, okay? Um, you'll have the publication cost, um, but that could be an option to move forward, not, you know, I mean, this is first we've heard of it, right? Um, but that would be my recommendation, uh, where, uh, you could, you might get it in tomorrow's paper, or at the latest, it'd be Saturday's paper. And then you look at two weeks out, uh, we could probably open bids the last meeting of the month, maybe, maybe that week prior. So it might be the twenty-fourth, maybe, if, if we can get it out there. I kinda think it'd be pretty close, that we could open those on the twenty-fourth. If not, we'd open on the thirty-first, and we just have to make a decision. And then if the commission has thoughts otherwise, if there's other, um, uh, other abilities to, to fund that, uh, and then is there, and just for the sake of discussion, is there any, uh, funds that you have that you can contribute, and maybe we could match if that ends up being an option as well? And I'm just throwing everything out here on the wall and see what sticks, okay?
No, the last bridge replacement we done, we funded it, and, you know, it's, uh, with our budget, it's hard for us to take these additional forty or thirty-five thousand dollar hits, it's just not there. But what, I mean, we will have money in it, there's no doubt about it, by the excavating side of it, it's probably all of that, but. And there's always eight or ten thousand dollars in rock, trying to get approaches put in on these sides, so. But the trouble we've had with bids, the last three we bid, nobody, except for one guy, has bid.
And we encounter that frequently as well, but.
I know the process.
But the compliance with the ARPA funding, Steve, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then if we just receive one, we've, we've acted in good, good faith, so. Do you have any questions for Steve on that?
But we do have two other bridges that's on, that are eligible for BRO, and.
What's your second one? I thought you just had one, Steve, what's your second one?
Uh, one is on Nation on the J I way side.
Okay, that one I think we have.
It's a big box culvert setup.
Uh-huh.
And the other one is on Al, uh, Harbor.
Um, let us look at that list, because Daryl has, uh, petitioned MODOT to get another one on for the county based upon their, uh, bridge inspection review, so we need to look at that. Both of those sound familiar, but it sounded to me like one of those had dropped off, and it was just, uh, uh, maybe Nation that MODOT, uh, had left on that list.
Another low-limit bridge, it gets crossed every day by heavy trucks, can't stop it, it's just.
Okay.
Whether it's a trash truck, or a bean truck, or a milk truck, you, you can't police that.
So, uh, today, uh, of course, the deadline's passed for BRO funding for this year. So I'm gonna assume they're gonna open it up next year, so we need to, uh, work towards that, that timeline and that goal. Uh, in the meantime, we need to figure out, uh, if one of those has been dropped off, if we can get it back on the, on the list.
Paperwork we've got shows that.
That it's on the list, okay, okay, interesting. Am I mistaken, or did we just have one? Uh, right now, we only have three on the list that MODOT has, uh, has given to us, uh.
And one of those don't count, basically.
Yeah, and, uh, and one of those was yours, Steve, yeah. How old's that report you have from them?
It's last year's.
Last year?
Year.
Okay, yeah, all right, we'll, we'll check into that.
Okay.
Okay, any, anything else for Steve? No, okay, uh, so I'm going to, uh, believe that you're gonna go ahead and put that out, out for, for bid.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, do you have anything else for us, Steve, or is that, is that you? Okay.
Mike, did, I thought, maybe I'm confused, did you say you had a bid on the thirty-five thousand?
Yes, I went to the guy that has done over, that, the only one that ever bids, and we got him to bid it.
So.
We looked at ten other options going to the.
Maybe just formal bids is what he needs to do then, is that what?
Yeah.
Process.
Of putting it out to the public, I guess, so, okay.
All right, Steve, thank, thank you, yeah. All right, now I'll come back to, um, signage, um, a little show and tell. We had asked for proposals, uh, months ago regarding signage for the new nine-one-one, and the, uh, directional signage here for the, for the campus. Uh, so, we had discussed putting letters on the, uh, that wall out front, uh, that would say Lakewood County. Uh, that would say Lakeland County Government Center. These are twelve inch, these are fifteen inch. These are, uh, a, a new proposal that was sent to us, these are a, uh, different design, they're not the precast. But those have a, um, a, I believe a lifetime warranty on those, they can be any color. Uh, the fifteen inch would be too big, uh, it's just gonna stretch out too far. But the twelve inch would work, would work fine. What's your thoughts gentlemen on those?
Have you by chance walked out with those?
I, I did, whenever the sign company representative was here, we went out and, and, um. Kinda held them, held them up there. Those are a little less than what we were quoted previously. More Perry, you want some bids? Yes, we did. Here Linda's got them here Perry, and, and, um, you can. You want us to, you wanna look at them and maybe we make a decision today, or you wanna take a? And we'll be here probably for another hour, if that gives you time, and again, if that lead time's important. Then, you know, maybe we'll make a decision today for you.
Do you want me to email it to you?
Uh, yeah, you can.
This says eighteen inch, is that what this is? No, that's, those are twelve inch letters. Now, I think if you look here, the fifteen inches, if we put that, that back on it. And then the letter's only twelve inch, so then that's say fifteen. Could be that bottom, that bottom illustration there. Now, in the sign company's opinion, he liked the black.
I didn't care for that, I made it on paper.
But, uh, it's up to, it's up to us, so.
I think they'd like to see both colors against the wall.
Well, before we adjourn. Take them out there and, and, uh, excuse me, and, and look at them. Thanks Steve.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, thank you guys.
Thanks Christian.
Very much, I appreciate it.
See ya. Okay, so, uh, can we narrow this down? Uh, twelve, twelve inch, and then just the remaining question would be color. And you like this injected molding, or whatever it's called, you like that? It was their recommendation as far as being the most durable. The second, uh, item that we've looked at, and this is a mock-up here partially. And this was the, uh, if you recall, we were gonna put up there on the. Uh, staircase on nine-one-one, um, we've been priced two sizes. We would go with the, the ten foot would be too big, if you look at, it would be, yeah, on that stair, stair power. And these can be any, any color. They would be lit, and then they would also be, uh, a halo look behind it. See if it's LED.
Okay, here's another reason to build with the white, because this one's ended up being light up letters also. You know, it matches on the walls, in my opinion. Which one is which?
I think the one on the right David's the eight foot.
The eight foot. And I think it's gonna be on the left.
My right, your left?
One twenty is on the right, yeah. Okay, ninety-six, I see the numbers now. No, I, I think they're sharp.
And then I think, uh, there would be some discussion, uh, that we should, um, undertake. As far as the. I haven't heard that one before, I haven't heard that one before.
It's FEMA.
Is the color, color scheme here, I, I think instead of this being red. I think if this housing was the same color as the building, or as close as we can, we can get. Uh, on the, on the ring, not much of it's gonna show anyway. And I personally think that would be better, and I'm also, we toss out the idea of some type of monochrome concept. As opposed to the, uh, uh, the color.
What was that again? Explain yourself monochrome.
So, uh, can I unplug this? So, we have the red, white, and blue theme, which, uh, that is essentially is our county logo. We can put anything in that ring that we want, okay, and I would suggest we leave it, of course, Lakeland County, Missouri. Uh, where we have established eighteen forty-nine, we could put nine-one-one, or, or whatever, or leave that alone. But I'm suggesting that maybe this be, uh, not red, white, and blue. But it be either shades of gray, or something similar, because it's gonna be backlit. And so the light would shine through the, uh, the stars, if you will. The stripes, if you will, and the Lakeland County, Missouri. I'm not opposed to the red, white, and blue, it's very patriotic, red does fade over time and, uh, of course they'll reassure us. That, that's gonna last as long as it possibly can, but red signs typically fade with time. And with age, and this could also be backlit with multiple, uh. Uh, colors of LED, so if you wanted to backlight it in blue, for law enforcement, you could. If you wanna backlight it, obviously in the, in the, uh, clear. Or if you wanna backlight it in red, but there's options there that we could, we could do.
So only the white is just where the light is coming through these cutouts.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess Daryl, what I'd be saying is the, I would, I would think, I, I mean. The red, white, and blue, uh, pops out. Um, I'm not opposed to it, um, but in just trying to evaluate long term. I would, if we, if we do the frame. I would do it in the color that matches the, the, uh, the building. And then if you wanna stay with the blue.
Or whatever?
Yeah, um. Or you do it in shades of. A gray, or a. Some other color, so, so that's what I mean by monochrome. These letters, um, we could, uh, expect those to be installed in a short length of time. This would have to go to fabrication, but if we're gonna use the ARPA funding again, we have to commit. I know we'll have a discussion here as we look at these bids, and we look at the remaining ARPA balance. Um, but, um, but these have been put out for bid earlier in the, in the year.
Well, no, this is all personal opinion, I, I really like the red, white, and blue version.
I was just gonna echo that, so, I, I don't know, I, I think the other ways it reminds you of the. A government building, of course, but, uh. If you do something that's, you know, not as colorful, I guess.
You know, we can always come back and do the colored LEDs for certain occasions as well. Because I think you can change the colors of those without a problem.
Um, that would be, that decision would need to be made at the time of installation, right?
Cause, you know, when they have law enforcement week, or whatever, week you're talking for different colors, I think that would be great.
And keep in mind, that would just be the, the halo color. And it would be, it would be what would, would come through here, so if you had blue on blue, or.
Yeah, that would be a little weird.
Red, red on blue, or whatever, and, and that's just an option.
It would still stand out as blue though, for the period. Daylight, it will always look like that, so.
Okay, so when you walk out there and look at those colors, then maybe, uh, take care of what you, what you think on that. Alright, general county business.
I'd like to know who gets to build his bridges for thirty-five thousand. That's a, we need to.
Probably the same one we had one do.
Yeah, we had two. Yeah, we had box culverts, not bridges. There's gotta be over twenty foot, if they're MODOT. That's crazy. Mentioned that, but.
Alright, uh, public comment items listed on the agenda. Linda, let's jump into routine business then. I don't have a current list, and I haven't asked for one, and, but curiosity gets me, we have one abatement here for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I'd like to know, know about that one, if I may, it's probably standard, it's probably something that was there last year, and. Probably it's a long-term abatement, but. I, uh, I guess I'd like to ask on that one, just, just for knowledge's sake. So I'm not really initial that one. And that's just really a curiosity question for me, it's not, um, anything more than that. Eric, would you wanna do me a favor? Possibly, would you wanna change that clock time up? I've looked at that now since October, and I'm like, you know, may, maybe if I do it now. And I've got nine forty Eric.
Nine thirty-eight.
But, well, and, and now I have nine thirty-nine, but I figured I'd give you a minute to, to do it, so it'd be nine forty.
Three, three months, it's gonna be correct.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I'm wait, that's like the clock beside my bed, it's too, too much trouble to change it, so.
I've changed everything except the wife's pickup, and I asked her, I said, you wanna change it, and she goes, why, it'll be correct in four months, so. I've changed everything except the wife's pickup. And I asked her, I said, you wanna change it? And she goes, why? It'll be corrected four months, so.
Wondering what it's abated.
I'm sure, just been on books. I'm just curious. All right, here's more coming your way, Darryl. Thanks, Eric.
Look out, Jeff.
Perfect.
You gotta go to your bottom to the left.
A little more, one more. That was a cheap ploy. You're gonna be doing, resetting all the clocks in the county now.
I won't.
You got a guy that's capable. Yeah.
Where did time go this morning?
Is there anything we can do to accept the mechanic from any time changes?
I'm not sure of anything about that, but I'd agree with you.
I'd say it years ago, go thirty minutes and leave it. Thirty minutes and leave it. When Illinois does that, a couple others who've got themselves off that. I think it's a state thing.
I think it's gotta be a state. Indiana.
And then if you wanna do these, I'm stepping out, popping back and just...
I'll compromise. I'd rather have a little bit of something, so it's not a nothing.
Okay.
She can tell you the whole story, but you, I know, now you know who it is.
Thirty minutes, you don't have to worry about that. It'll, it'll all still trickle out as rotation goes through. I mean, in theory, it's way down.
Get up anyway.
You know, if we print it on, if that were to happen.
Very many years, I think.
So, if you're right, it's made into resolution, that's still, that's irrelevant.
I noticed that the sign left the premises that same day. Did you guys pack it off? It got dirty, dried out, too.
Yeah, we did. Yeah. You know, that's what I say, you start something, you don't ever stop around here.
Is that the sign that was laid over on the ground?
You ever, you ever start something, you, you're the person in charge of that project from then, that point forward.
I don't know how long that sign's laid over like that. At least a long, at least been a long time.
Oh, it's still on premise, but it, it's back out of way. Back over there behind the rock piles. We made a motion while we was out there. Just so happened, we had a brush cutter that was going by it. Right, it was right there. He pulled off to do a little duty. Yeah. Oh, he just laid the thing down. We just laid the, the cutter down, and we just pushed it back on, and he lifted it up. Pulled it off to the rebar pile. I bet that thing had been laying there for it.
It'd been a while. I mentioned that box culvert for thirty-five thousand. I'd say that's still labor. I'd say that money, that's just labor.
That box culvert, we just priced an aluminum one that's not that, quite that big. It's double.
Okay.
What them is? Okay. All right, we have, might get a chance to see the ones. Okay? Do I?
You bet all the ones aren't that way. Slows down decently.
That line is just bad this year. More people, most people get their money back. Besides being slow.
Yeah. Pricing chill going down probably helped. Reach a board. Came back through Bucky's on Sunday, the branch, it was two thirty-eight. Randy, you have anything after this?
Nothing that's...
Nothing that's pressing, okay. I'd like to get with these for five or ten minutes. Maybe while Darryl and David are out there looking at the signs. Okay, we came to the public comments items not listed on the agenda.
Go ahead and say something if you don't mind, per Darryl's statement and David's comment there, and Steve just touched on it while he was out of the room. We've got a lot of good local people around here that are smaller businesses that, that do do good work, and they're healed for that thirty-five thousand you talked about. That is, that would be more like a box culvert type thing to do. And you're right, it isn't gotten Conway that's doing that. I've been down the roads and stuff and where they've been working and, and everything, so. And a lot of those just don't bid it, because they don't do those things. They're not on the computers. They're not on ion waves to, you know, just like what the city does and a few others, as far as our bid processing anymore. You know, they've generated into more of a computer types to, but we still got a lot of good local people out there that do good work. And they don't have to do it on that corporation type deal, you know, or figuring all that clerical, because they're doing that clerical stuff at eleven o'clock or four o'clock in the morning, everybody else is sleeping, going to bed, or that's when they're figuring their bids and stuff. But it's something to consider and to check into, you know, try to help those people get to where they can be on that type of stuff, is my opinion.
And I mean, if you advertise it in the paper, there's only what about fifty-five hundred, six thousand people out of thirty-seven thousand in the county that hit the paper?
If, if that even...
Some people don't even see that.
Forty-six sixty is what the subscription is right now. Well, within there's two thousand that do it on the internet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you got some online people, but there again, you're on the online thing. But some of them, you know, a lot of country hillbys like myself don't do a lot of that unless somebody helps them get where they can. So.
I know at Special Road, we, we solicit a lot of bids because we just, we just don't, we tried to advertise them, and we just don't get it, so.
We're, we're mandated to do the advertising, but we also try to do some soliciting. We did, we did some box culverts. Oh, last year or year before even, with a lot of those guys from Conway area that were actually, probably who it was that he had. And we did reach out to those individuals, and they submitted bids because of the outreach, so. Point, point well made, but it is a common practice. If we put something out for bid and we don't receive any response, then we'll call three, three people and ask them if they want to submit on that. And sometimes you'll get three, sometimes you'll get one. But in good faith, we always, for auditors, will seek three proposals. So, it's a, it's a good practice, and I think all of us value the supporting local. And so we'll continue to do that, so. Any, any other comments, public comments not listed on the agenda?
I'd like to add, too, that a lot of them don't meet the qualifications with insurance and that, that stuff as well, as why that doesn't happen. Yeah, no, we...
We do have still several ARPA...
Oh, we do, we do.
On that. And if you exceed that, it's still new government stuff and everything as well, where they, they actually, Randy's know what they're soliciting for. Yeah, no, I, I understand all that as well. I just wanted to, you know, but it can happen. A lot of times with some of the local guys, because they don't have all that extra they gotta add in there for it. Figuring that extra ten percent for this and the one point seven markup on this and all that other, so.
Okay. We have a pre-construction meeting next Wednesday at ten o'clock on the two BRO projects. Couldn't make it happen on Tuesday, but it'll be next Wednesday at ten o'clock.
Still wanna have the Tuesday meeting as well?
We will, Joe. Yeah, Tuesday will be for just regular agenda county business, and Wednesday will be only for the pre-construction, yeah.
What two bridges are you guys looking at?
Bobcat and Atlanta.
I thought Atlanta was already, I had somebody reach out to me about hauling rock in there for it already.
No, Steve, both of these have taken a while. I think Bobcat's been worked probably nearly three years, and...
And this guy may have just been getting figures for bid, but I, when I gave him the bid, he said, I'm gonna look at other avenues.
Okay. Well, it could be, the contractor, I believe, on this is KCI, is who the bid was awarded to.
I was thinking this guy was out in Jeff City or Columbia that called me, so.
I guess we can find out next Wednesday. Okay, are we all in for next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. David, we're in next Wednesday, too. Okay. That's essentially all I, all I have. When you wanna go out and look at the sign, and when we come back in, I'd like to work down through the ARPA balance list here. Kind of make the rest of the morning kind of a work study to get that, because we're, we are knocking on the door now. So if you wanna do that, and I can see Randy just for, so we'll recess while you guys go outside. Be back in five minutes or so.
Yep.
Okay.